Turn this on. It is six thirty-one P M. On Thursday, May one, twenty twenty-five. Convene the Brandon Planning and Zoning Commission. Call to order, and we need a roll call, please.
Megan. Brian. Brooks.
Here.
Rob. Alyssa.
Here.
Mike. Barb.
Let the, let the record show that I, Alyssa Tealy, am conducting the meeting because Barb, who is our typical chairman, Barb Fish, who is our typical chairman, is not available tonight. Okay. And then I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Don't so moved.
Fast it off second.
If a, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion approved. I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the April seventeen meeting. I wasn't here, so I can't say.
No motion to approve. I'd break second.
Motion and second, all in favor. Aye, all opposed, motion carried. We are now at the public comments section of our meeting. Is there anybody in the audience who has any comments? Seeing none, I will go to item number six, which is a discussion item, a lot of record definition. Patrick, can you bring us up to date on this?
Sure. So occasionally, we just like to go through the ordinance and do a little bit of maintenance where it's required. We'd rather take care of an issue before it becomes an issue, not that it would ever become that. But there was a court case out of McCook County last year in twenty twenty-four that reexamined the definition of lot of record. And McCook County used similar language to ours. If you look on page eight in the packet, the, the key language that they looked at was it, their definition ends with prior to the effective date of this ordinance was the key thing they discussed. And ours used the same. The problem that we potentially run into is they interpreted this ordinance as being the most recently adopted version of the zoning code, rather than the zoning code historically, where we, my understanding is our intent was that lot of record is something legally created that preexisted zoning entirely, because a lot of record or a lot that existed prior to the current zoning ordinance would be a non-standard lot. So kind of a difference in definition. So the proposed ordinance seems, the intent is to make it read as, my understanding of the intent was that it pre, it's, a lot of record is a lot that legally preexisted the adoption of zoning, which was sometime in the nineties. That is the proposal. Whether it'll actually ever come into play, I guess it was June first nineteen eighty-seven was the first adoption date of our zoning code. If you look at the little history sections, that seems to be the first one. So that is the proposal.
Why would it make a difference? And I think you already said it, but I didn't catch it. Why would it make a difference if it's before, i- if the lot of record predates zoning or predates the most recent zoning?
It probably mostly comes into play with R one lots. We have had R one lots that have been historically larger than most. So conceptually, the, I think in R one, we allow buildable lots that are lots of record that would have been, I think, our originally platted lots were smaller than fifty feet of frontage. So that would allow those to be buildable, where if they were non-conforming, you run into a little bit more issues.
Any, any of the commissioners have any comments on this?
No, I appreciate you bringing it forward, Patrick, and noticing it. I defer to your judgment there. I think it sounds good.
If anyone's following along at home and really likes to read South Dakota Supreme Court opinions, it is Stockwell versus McCook County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so it looks like this is good. So what is the next step with this change?
We would schedule a public hearing. Since it's already May first, it's already May first, the year seems to be flying. It'll probably be first meeting in June, it's a public hearing.
Okay. And then it goes through that process and then it goes to the council?
Correct.
And then they have a public hearing and has to be?
Yep, takes roughly sixty to ninety days to get through it.
Okay, very good. Uh, next, next item. Let me scroll back up here. Item number seven, interstate signage overlay district.
All right, we have to go all the way to page twenty-eight in the packet. So the big thing here with this new draft is we crossed out a whole lot of language about how you measure the height and where it's measured from. So as we talked about last time, we just limit, we just made it a solid number, feet in height. And then I believe the plan was after we had gotten this through, we would eventually go back to the sign regulations and put where it's measured from broadly in there, rather than have the measurement point be one thing here and then different there, just to sync it all up. So hopefully that the language with the crossouts does what your intent was.
Patrick, with this overlay district, do we need to put anything in fifteen-three-ten, our signage ordinance, referencing this? Or do we need to put anything in this that says all other requirements of fifteen-three-ten apply? I'm just wondering if we need to put something in our, in our signage ordinance that says, you know, this shall comply with this unless noted in fifteen-fifteen. And then that this, that this applies, but everything in fifteen-three-ten also applies.
We can put that language probably in the fifteen-fifteen-five, the first paragraph doesn't, it just sets the overlay. We could probably put that in the special area regulations, A and B, if we just make a citation that everything else applies.
I have a question for, maybe for the people who are listening. It says the purpose of interstate sign overlay district, I'm reading in fifteen-five-five, is to provide an area with, within one thousand four hundred feet of Interstate ninety as measured from the center of the interstate right away. Now, how, would that be to the north and to the south?
Correct.
And how far from the east and the west? City limits?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let's say on the north and to the south, how far does that actually come? Does that, you know, I can't think in my head, how far is fourteen hundred feet from the interstate north? How, how close to Corson does that get? On the south, what, what would be affected?
So I will, we'll start at exit four oh six.
Okay.
Measure it down. So we'll, we'll assume roughly the, the middle is between the road.
Sure.
Fourteen hundred feet takes you down to roughly, when it reloads and resinks itself, just past the McDonald's lot.
Okay.
Takes you right kind of to that property line.
Just past McDonald's lot?
Yes, it takes you to kind of the property line between McDonald's and the church.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm wondering.
And north probably would go quite a ways into Corson, but it wouldn't apply, because Corson isn't subject to our zoning as it's out in the county.
Yeah.
It would actually, it'd still be south of
Yeah.
the actual city of Corson. So it'd be, it'd be south of like where the residential starts.
Yes, looks a little ways south of.
So it wouldn't interfere with?
Right.
You know, you wouldn't have huge signs and residential.
And should that ever come into the city, then it would apply. And if it was residential, of course, it wouldn't, but.
Because Corson is an unincorporated village, correct?
Correct. It was once a village, but it is no longer.
It's under county control.
Correct.
Okay, um, I remember when they used to have their own post office in Corson, but not anymore. Um, okay, so that helps me visualize in my head how far south it will go and what we're talking about. And mostly, we're trying to form this overlay district because of the businesses that are already and will be in the I ninety plaza there, right by the interstate exit.
Other places too, but yes, we've heard very loudly from businesses in those areas that taller and, I mean, if they could do it larger as well, but we're addressing taller signs are, seem to be what they require.
We're addressing taller, but not size, not larger
Correct.
signs, just the tallness of them. Yes, we've already had requests for taller signs in that I ninety plaza. So thank you for your patience. I say that for listeners' benefit. Are there, you know, what other discussion do we have on, on the overlay district? It says we'd like to limit to ninety feet in height. Is that just from ground level up?
And that's something we would go back and wanted to address later, but at, right now, if we had to interpret it, yes, it would be wherever the base of the sign is. But whether we go back later and adjust that measurement point generally for signs, that's, that's upcoming. But right now, yes, it would be from the base. Absent further clarification, if you have any.
And we also say in here, a freestanding sign located within three hundred feet of a residentially zoned lot shall not exceed thirty feet in height. So if they're close to houses where people live, it can't be ninety feet.
Correct. And if it's a residentially zoned lot itself, the overlay does not apply.
Good to know. Anything else, folks? So this is just a discussion item, not, not, no voting on it today, but what is the next step then, Patrick?
Public hearing, if you all are willing to advance it forward, and that would again probably be June, first meeting in June.
I think we've hashed it out pretty, I think, what I'm seeing here works for me.
We've spent several meetings on this already, couple of months. So, very well then. We can then move on to our next agenda item, another discussion item on general business freestanding signage, page thirty-one in our packets.
So last meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion about how we wanted to do this. We ended up tossing it out and creating entirely new language. So my understanding from that conversation was that the one-for-one rule still applied. You didn't want a sign taller than, or larger than two hundred square feet. And you wanted some manner of separation distance between them. What I put in there was, it's measured from the, the, the distance shall be the size of the largest sign between them. So if you have a forty and a twenty, they would have to be forty apart. And otherwise, then I had a little language where you should have one on each frontage before you add a second one to a particular frontage. Whether that's something you want or not is up to you. I, this is just kind of a starting point from our last conversation.
I saw that requirement for the signs on the separate frontages, but I don't, I don't know what the benefit of that is. If you have a, a long street and you have a side street, I don't know why we would require a business to put a sign on that street before they could advertise on the main street if there's no traffic there, no benefit for them. I don't, I don't, I guess I would strike that requirement. Yeah, I guess I would agree. If, if we're already putting the distance between signs on there, I don't know if that matters if it's on one or two frontages. I guess the other comment I had when, when looking at this, if we do have a, say, a corner lot, how do we need to delineate how that measurement would be made? Would it be based on, on the frontage, or would it be based on a direct line of sight? So if you had, people, people can't hear this or see this if they're listening, but so you had a corner lot and you had a sign here and a sign here, would that distance be measured at the angle? Or would it be measured straight across? I could see that coming into play. I guess in, in my mind, it would be based on, on the distance along the frontage. But that might be a little bit difficult if they're set back a ways from the frontage. It might get kind of confusing, but I don't know. Other people's thoughts on how that should be determined?
I, I think that it should be determined along the frontage, but I do wonder if we want to put a minimum sight distance, you know, so if, if there was a situation where they were too close, you know, that we, you know, they have to be at least, you know, fifty feet of, of hard separation or hundred feet of separation. I don't know what the calculation should be, but I think the calculation should be off of the frontage, but then we might want to have a minimum separation there, but I don't know how.
So we do have a sight triangle in fifteen-fifteen-one. The, the first, that section of the additional use regulations is a sight triangle. Basically, if it's within that certain area, it can't block your vision. It has to be either lower or taller than what your field of vision would be. Yes, the, the sight triangle is probably something we should update, because the measurements don't quite match the image, because you have one long forty feet and you have the same forty feet, that's a little taller. But yes, it's, it's a forty, no forty, where that sight line needs to be. And that applies along driveways as well, but that's ten feet from the road on either side of a driveway.
So the, a sign can't be closer to ten feet from the corner on a corner lot? Forty feet, I'm sorry. A sign has to be at least forty feet back from the corner if it's a corner lot? Is that what you're saying?
It, if it's in that area, it has to go out of its way to not be where your line of sight would be. It could be there, it just couldn't be a monument sign that's right in your face.
Okay. Okay.
And from a business standpoint, I don't think, I don't see why a business would want to put up signs that are too close that they don't gain. So I, I mean.
Well, if they were positioned so they were, one was facing east-west and one was facing north-south.
Yeah, but then they wouldn't, they wouldn't really be fighting each other too much either. So I, I mean, I think that the business would want to have it so that it looks nice too, you know. But I, I do think that we would want to have, want to have some kind of a minimum distance between signs still.
I don't understand this sentence. It says, if a lot has two or more frontages, okay, so a corner lot, let's say, at least one freestanding sign shall be located on two of the frontages. So you'd have to have at least two signs before a second freestanding sign is permitted? That, that doesn't make sense to me.
That was the language.
That's what you were talking about too?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, say you have a corner lot.
Yeah.
This would have required you to put one sign on each of the frontages before you put two on one of them.
Before, okay, yeah, because it's not, doesn't seem like it's worded that way.
Okay.
The way it seems like it word, it's worded is, if, if a lot has two or more frontages, at least one sign shall be on each frontage before a s- oh, okay, all right. Now that you explain it, the sentence makes sense.
It becomes a little complicated
Yeah, it does.
because you do have triple frontage lots and
Yeah.
it seemed a little
A lot is two or more frontages.
harsh to then be, you have to put one on each of the triples before you can add a second one.
Would we ever commit?
One of them is an alley or a infrequently used street or whatever else.
Would we ever, would we ever let a second sign be on one-sided, one-frontage? Do we allow that?
This current, this language does. This does not limit the number. It just limits the size. If you had a thousand feet of frontage, you could have five two-hundred-square-foot signs. You could have ten one-hundred-square-foot signs, assuming you can beat the separation.
I remember years ago talking about this very thing in regard to the, the sunshine story lot. And I know we said, oh, a sign on each frontage, because that's a corner lot. And then I remember us saying, we, there could be two signs on one frontage, but they had to be however X number of feet away from each other, right? We still have that, yeah. And that would be the same as what this would be?
This language would likely replace whatever that was, because this is setting a new standard for your general business and central business freestanding signs.
All right. So would we have to put a language in there that would say, if there are two signs on the same frontage, they have to be at least this far apart, such X far apart?
So right now, the proposed language, that whether it's, I guess, a corner and they're trying to figure out the distance between them, or if they're on the same, it's measured off of the size of the larger of the two signs. So if you have a forty here and a twenty there, it would be forty feet between them, because the forty is the larger sign.
Okay. Would that then preclude anybody from changing out their sign at any point?
Assuming that they still meet the size requirement.
If they had a forty and a twenty and they decided to change the forty into a sixty?
Then your sign and not your board's sign.
Okay. So if they had a forty and a twenty and they're forty feet apart, and they decide to change the forty into a sixty? They couldn't do that, because now they'd be non-conforming, because they'd have to be sixty feet apart. Is that something we have to worry about right now?
That would require them to do a lot of front-end planning on their signage, and hopefully they would.
Last meeting, we talked about allowing them to have on two frontages. Is there, I'm not seeing where it specifically says that they can't have it on three frontages. Is there, do we need to add something in there that limits that? Or, or is there an allowance for that at some point? Or what's our plan on that?
I'm open to your thoughts.
I guess in my mind, if they have enough frontage to, say, they have six hundred feet of frontage, they could put up three two-hundred-square-foot signs.
But so, let's use Quick Star, because that's a, a real example. So they've got three frontages. Right now, they can use the frontage on Holly as calculation to get to, how, I guess, we can look and see how long that is, but so they can use calculation on that, and then they can use calculations on that other frontage, whatever, the one that goes north and south. It's a heritage. And then they have that back one. Right now, if we don't say that, you know, they can't go, they could, they could calculate two-hundred-foot signs on each one. Three hundred, so it'd be quite. And so they could have a two hundred and a hundred and fifty on Holly, two hundred on Heritage, or two fifty, two hundred and fifty on Heritage, and then two hundred and a hundred and fifty on that north street. So they can have six pretty good sized signs. I'm just wondering if on, you know, as we, as we're adding frontages, do we need to have something that limits, you know, if, if we said that they could, like, on the, um, on the wall signs, we were talking about allowing, you know, kind of a calculation like this, but they could only use frontage on two sides for the calculation. So I'm wondering if we use, if we use two frontages as the calculation and then they put the signs where they want, so they don't get the calculation off of the third frontage? Because they're getting a lot of square footage of signage.
I guess what I was thinking, um, before you brought this up, is that you could only use, you could only, say in the Quick Star, you could only use the frontage on Holly to determine the amount of signage you could put on Holly. So if you had, would you say three hundred and fifty feet? That they could have three hundred and fifty square feet of signage on Holly. That they couldn't take the frontage from Heritage and apply that to signage on Holly? Or the back street and apply that to Holly and Heritage? That you could only take the, the frontage on that street to justify the sign. So, so you had a, a parcel that was two hundred feet long on a side street and fifty feet on a main street. In my mind, they should be limited to fifty, fifty square feet on the main street.
Yeah, you can't borrow.
Yeah.
You can't borrow from one frontage to use on a different frontage.
Now, that may get a little bit complicated depending on where a sign is placed. You know, usually we see people put signs right up next to the property line, but once they start pushing them farther and farther into the lot, that becomes a little bit vague and it could be a little bit harder to determine, well, is this, is this sign on this frontage or is it on that frontage? You know, especially when you get to things like the industrial park, where they're not advertising to their, to the frontage that you approach the building, they're putting their, they're advertising to the, to the interstate side. That, that might get a little bit difficult to try to enforce, but.
Yeah, and I, I wasn't thinking about allowing them to, to, you know, take frontage from one side to the other. I'm just thinking that with three sides, they could have three hundred and fifty on Holly, two hundred and fifty on Heritage, and another three hundred and fifty on Frontier. That gets to be a lot of signs. I was wondering if we wanted to limit, if they wanted to put signs on a third side, they could borrow from the other two frontages. So instead of having three fifty and two fifty, which is six hundred, and then another three fifty, they would just have that six hundred that they could use on that parcel. So they could, if they wanted to put a fifty-foot or fifty-square-foot sign, they could, they would have to take fifty feet from either Holly or Heritage, so that they, just think, that's a lot of signage, is all I was thinking. Hopefully that ever happened, but would it happen where if they had so much signage, they don't need that much? Would they go, oh, you got a business, do you want to advertise in mine? I'll throw up a sign for it and you pay me. It's like, ends up being a billboard to an extent. I mean, since they have the signage to sell.
I, I could certainly see that as being a situation. If you have a unique lot, um, where you don't need to have Yeah, yeah, they're, they're on
where you don't need to have, yeah, yeah, they're, they're on a, a pretty busy street there on Holly. And then, you know, Frontier, there's a lot of businesses, you know, if we just use this example, right behind them, there's a lot of businesses that maybe don't have as good a visibility. And they could throw another sign up on even the corner of Heritage and Frontier. You could throw a sign up on that corner there. And so I just, I'm, I'm thinking if we, if we're in a situation where there's three frontages and I'm not sure that adding in that calculation for the third frontage is, is too much.
Do we maybe change the wording so that for the first two-hundred square feet, you get, two-hundred, or sorry, two-hundred linear feet, you get two-hundred square feet? And then after that, it's like a two-to-one ratio? Say you got four-hundred feet of frontage, you'd get a two-hundred-square-foot sign for the first two-hundred. And then for the next two-hundred, you'd only get an additional hundred square feet to maybe reduce a situation like that from happening.
Well, I mean, if, if you can think it, somebody's
Somebody's gonna do it.
You know?
You know, the, the Sunshines, I get it. You know, they could, they could easily have three, three big signs on all three sides. Now, that one, yeah, they got a lot of frontage for the size of their parcel. That's kind of the opposite end of the spectrum, but.
And they, you know, I, I don't think that they have anything excessive there. And probably most businesses don't want to have too much. They don't want to, sometimes you get too much going on and you take away. But I, at the same time, I could see a situation where someone just wants to put up signs. And if our allowance, our ordinance allows for it, what do we do? And then all of a sudden we have a, a situation where we have somebody that's just got a ton of signs. So I think if you get more than, and there's, there are quite a few, especially in commercial stuff where you get a lot that has three frontages, um, you could certainly, I think, I think there should be something to limit that. So I think that could be a good calculation.
Yeah, I could, I could see a strip mall with a lot of little businesses in it. They would definitely maximize, you know, what, what, what you could, what you're talking about on Quick Start. And that, that could get a little hectic, so.
So would you limit then, so like, take your main frontage and you get two-hundred to start with? And then after that, does it, does all of the other furnages go under that two-to-one ratio? Or is it, does each frontage start out with two-hundred and then after two-hundred goes to the two-to-one? So like, the Quick Start example, you have along Holly, you got, say, three-fifty. And then, um, so you got like, let's just say three-fifty, two-fifty, and three-fifty. So are we giving, are we adding that all together? And then the first two-hundred of that total, all three sides, that total frontage, you get two-hundred and then all the other sides, you have two-to-one after that? Or we do on each side, it's two-hundred?
I was thinking about, about the, basically on one side. That's where my brain was going just to make, and to kind of force them to make a choice of where they want to maximize and then put up limitation on their ass. But they'd still get benefit of being able to have signs on different furnages, but just not to the same degree.
Because we, you could, like on the Quick Start, you could have a two-hundred square-foot sign and then you'd have almost enough left over for four more one-hundred square-foot signs. You know, that'd be, that'd be a lot of signs, you know. So, um, versus.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, what I'm hearing is any lot that has more than one frontage, they get to pick one of those frontages and it would have, it could have a two-hundred square-foot sign, ah, based on two-hundred linear feet of that, of their chosen frontage. And all their other frontages would have then a two-to-one ratio. Would be the leftover of their chosen frontage and any other frontage they may have would be signage on a two-to-one ratio. Is that, did I word that? Is I, am I understanding that the way you want it or?
I think yes, except I'm thinking about the, I don't know if, I don't know if it's necessary to mention the frontage. If somebody had a thousand feet of frontage on one frontage somehow, if we just wanted to be the same, they'd get, if you mentioned, two-hundred feet for the first two-hundred feet of that frontage and then remaining eight-hundred would yield them a four-hundred feet of additional signage. So I don't know, in my mind, I don't know if it's necessary to mention furnages in that sentence or that part of it.
Okay, I'm not sure I get you.
But maybe it doesn't hurt to mention either. That's where I'm going back and forth.
As if they have more than one frontage, they would get to pick which frontage is their preferred frontage that they get the big two-hundred front sign.
I don't think we're insinuating that they have to pick a frontage. I think we're just saying the total amount of signage, square footage that they could use. Because that first sentence already dictates how close, or how close the signs can be based on how big they are.
Each lot shall be, up here in this B, the, the blue paragraph that, is that the paragraph you're talking about?
Yeah.
Each lot shall be allowed one square foot of freestanding signage per one foot of linear street frontage. No individual freestanding sign shall exceed two-hundred square feet in area. A freestanding sign should be separated from another.
Second sentence.
Pardon me?
It was the second sentence of the case.
Okay.
How close the signs can get, sorry.
Right, right, right.
So if they put up a two-hundred, if they put up a two-hundred square-foot sign, the next closest sign would have to be two-hundred feet away.
Okay. So if one of their frontages is longer than two-hundred feet?
Would actually be, yeah, it depends on, because you, you'd center it on there, right? So potentially, if you had a two-hundred-foot section, you're allowed a two-hundred square-foot sign, but you'd probably put it in the middle. So then that, that frontage for that sign would end at a hundred feet. And then if you had another sign that was, say, twenty-five feet, and if that was in the middle of that section, it'd have to be, or so, next one, fifty feet, it'd have to be twenty-five feet down from that, right? Is that kind of how you calculate that? If you, if you had a two-hundred square-foot sign, that's for two-hundred square foot of, or two-hundred linear feet of frontage, but you'd put that on the center of that. So the next sign, is that, that frontage would go a hundred feet past that? And then if the next sign was fifty square feet, it would be twenty, you know, you'd have a, another boundary. So you'd be twenty-five feet off of that and be in the center. So it'd be a hundred and twenty-five feet apart, right?
The way that's, so, so say you have, I'll use the map. Say you had your two-hundred and you put it right on the left side where that frontage is, kind of right in the middle. And you would measure the two-hundred, so say this is the one, then, as we talked about earlier, you would measure it to be a hundred, you know, again, so then it would be.
Because only the larger the two signs matters in that separation, right?
Correct, as it's currently.
Yes, as it's currently written, the larger of the sign is the one that matters.
But that, that assumes, would have Quick Start put one in the far southwest corner, a two-hundred square-foot sign. They could put a hundred and fifty square-foot sign in the southeast corner. If they're three-hundred and fifty feet apart.
Right. You can't, you can't assume that somebody's going to put the sign right in the middle of their frontage.
I would assume they do whatever gets them the most signage on the frontage they want.
Okay, to reword what I said earlier. So am I hearing that what you'd, what you'd like to do is, uh, let's see, up to two-hundred square-foot sign for the first two-hundred feet of frontage, all other frontage would get a square foot of signage per two feet of frontage. Patrick is the one who asked to come up with the wordage to write down, but he always does a good job, so. But just so I understand what you're, is that what we want to do?
I guess the other thing is we increase the requirement for the distance. So right now, we say for every one square foot assigned, you have to be one foot away. The other way we could, we could limit a situation like this where there's a lot of frontage for a smaller lot is to increase that distance. So for every one square foot assigned, maybe it's two linear feet away. So in a situation like that, it's what, a hundred and fifty feet front to back, or two-fifty front to back, right? So you couldn't put a two-hundred square-foot sign on the south side of the property and a two-hundred square-foot sign on the north side. But yet, in a situation like Lewis, you could put one on the south property line, one on the north property line, one on the east property line, all of them could be two-hundred square feet. Because their lot is big enough that they could get those signs far enough away.
Anyway, does that help you enough, Patrick, to, this is just discussion for tonight, so, does that help you enough to bring back some other, uh, some different verbiage for our next meeting?
I think so. If you have any comments in the meantime, feel free to email them over. But yes, I, we'll, we'll have a modified draft for the next meeting.
I have one question. Does, if, if a property is, uh, on an alley, does an alley count as a frontage? Or only streets where people, you know, only streets? Only streets?
I want to say the definition of frontage is a public, a public or private street. So an alley is not classified as a street.
So, so when we're considering frontages, only streets count, alleys don't count?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Uh, we can move on to our next agenda item. Thank you guys for being patient with me when I try to clarify everything. Okay, so number nine, building permits for April. We're up to that now. Page thirty-three. There are quite a few. Looks like we've had thirteen permits for thirteen single-family homes so far this year compared to fifteen so far, uh, in the same amount of time last year. So it's sort of comparable, short a little bit. But we've also had permits for forty-six multifamily units so far this year. So that's a total of fifty-nine, fifty-nine living units so far this year.
Compared to fifteen last year, so we're doing pretty good.
Fifteen last year, fifty-nine this year. Figure there's, what is it? They figure two-point-five persons per, so fifty-nine, two-point, I.
A lot of half people running around out there.
Yeah. So that's about, I, you know, without doing math, except for generally in my head, that's another hundred and twenty people. We expect to be moving into our city here once those are built. So there you go. Any questions or comments about the building Yeah. I don't see anything unusual in them. A nine-part, nine-unit apartment complex, a twenty-two unit apartment complex, and another nine unit. Otherwise, it's all the basic stuff, fences, shingle. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, no?
To a second.
Been moved in second and all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. It is seven Well, thank you guys. Sure.